Good evening. And welcome to our June 18 work session. If you didn't see Mr. Campos, he was waving and welcoming you.
That side missed out.
Oh, that side missed out. Well, he was welcoming everybody. Thank you, Mr. Campos.
Yes, of course.
City manager.
Deputy Mayor, thank you. We're prepared this evening to provide some information pertaining to wayfinding signs, specifically pertaining to the transient guest tax and the city budget. At this point, I'd like to introduce Mr. Fiander to provide that information.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Just to be real brief about our background in wayfinding and just kind of bring you up to speed as to what came before the transient guest tax committee a few weeks ago. There is a, about 10 years ago, we undertook through some of our comprehensive planning an effort to bring wayfinding signs, which is really a family of signs that help with tourists and visitors to the city find our major destinations. There's 21 major destinations that we identified back then as needing location signs. And so, at that time, we, this was all funded at the time, the first phase through city general fund dollars to do the design and to do the first 14 or so signs. That was a very short phase. They identified another, almost 175 to 180 signs in addition to what we started out with. So, the next phase came about shortly thereafter using bed tax funds. There was 83 signs funded through that. It was about $200,000. And the, obviously, the theory there was these go towards our visitors and help connect the dots throughout the city so that they and others can know of the places that we have to offer. They can get around the city a lot easier. And that was actually a major recommendation that came out of some of our historic preservation planning as well, that we were just not as friendly as we could be in heritage tourism as well as our, some of our other non-heritage destinations, but major attractions nonetheless. So, fast forward to last, to this year. Since then, we have not installed any new signs. We have not, I don't believe, sought funding for the new signs. We have another 80, or sorry, yeah, 82 signs remaining in the program. So, of all those 170, 180 signs that we had identified originally, we still have about 82 left to go. Came back with a proposal at the transient guest tax committee to help fund that over the next two years. There's also a cost included in that to repair the signs, some of the signs we have now. One unique feature, which is a good feature, is once the signs, once the poles are up, and the signs can be replaced without taking out the pole, there's a square yellow sign that can indicate where the destinations are. If there's a new destination that changes, like the visitor centers changed locations here over the last few years, we had to put new signs up indicating where those are. So, those can be interchanged, and those aren't, it's not as costly to do that as opposed, but we're talking about putting up new, another 82 signs that need poles and signs to go with it. That broke down to a cost of $150,000 for 2014 and 100, less than $170,000 for 2015. And we presented that to the guest tax committee. I do believe that, I think we're somewhat flexible on how that gets spread out over the years, but that is generally, you're looking at about a $300,000 cost to finish the program. And also, we need to budget some of the, about $5,000 a year just to maintain the signs because we did not ever really budget funding for maintaining the signs. So, but in the bed tax proposal, generally about $300,000 over two years was presented.
Are there any questions or concerns, Mr. Campos?
What company do we currently contract with to make the signs?
We don't. We don't have any signs that need to be replaced now. We do in-house.
Okay.
So, there is no contract. We own the rights to the sign design, and so, and we have a spec manual, a design manual that whoever it is, we, it's seamless to whoever can put those up, but we have the rights and keep that in-house.
The first two phases were signs that were made in-house?
I'm sorry, no. The first two phases were with outside contractors, yes. The ones I'm talking about being made in-house were the, when we had to replace the visitor centers, they, visitor center moved, we had to replace the yellow signs. We made those in-house. There was a couple that we had to make. Ones that get damaged and we have to replace them, they've done those in-house over the last few years. But no, what you see out in the field is was installed by non-city contractors.
If I may?
Yes, sure.
Would it be beneficial for us to keep it in-house?
Well...
Do we have the capacity to make these signs already?
We do not.
We do not?
We do not have the capacity to make the design that has, that the 80-some that are out there right now have.
Okay. If it were at all palatable, I think that would be a great option. And I will testify from my perspective. I was coming home two weeks ago from the council meeting and actually found a feller driving over there by Hills, and he had Arizona Tags, who's from Glendale. Maybe a friend of Jim's, I don't know. But he was significantly lost. And I ended up turning back around on River Road, catching up with him, said, "Can I help you find something?" He was actually looking for the Overland Station. And he was looking for it on the wrong side of the river. So, that's a great testimony as to something that we do need these signs to a certain degree.
It wasn't the city manager.
It could have been, I don't know.
Okay, let's have some order here, please.
Thank you.
We're not going to pick on the city manager. Please be acknowledged to speak. We're not going to pick on the city manager.
That's all.
Everybody from Glendale doesn't need a sign. Anyway, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. On the second page of the handout is the listing and the costs. And then the third page is a, shows the signs. The one, it says 12 locator signs. And then on the signage sheet, though, there's none that is indicated as a locator sign.
Oh, yeah, I didn't, I didn't give, we, these are the main signs that you will see. The 12, and in fact, I don't even think we have the kiosk type sign up at all. The locator sign is a, we have one, for instance, that's T-Pac, right out front here. We have a locator sign. It's a small, the pole looks the same, but the sign is, it just says Topeka Performing Arts, and it, but it matches the design of all the wayfinding signs. It's a smaller, it's a small sign.
And then the 50 large signs is the one designated large directional unit?
Yes, that would be the large sign. That's, and that's been, depends on what type of street you're on, as to whether we put those up or not, and how many view, how many destinations go on that sign as well. The more, the more that are on there, the more we have to have it large.
Thank you.
Before I call on Mr. Harmon, I do want to have, ask you something. I know, it was maybe two or three years ago, Mayor Button requested that we stop putting signs up. Was this a part of this? Because I remember, we took down a whole bunch of signs, and I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, and there was, he showed us a film where there was like 10 signs on a half a block. I mean, it, but, but did we stop this process because of that? Or did we take down any of these signs when we kind of went through that sign, sign, everywhere a sign?
No, we did not take down any of the wayfinding signs. I think more the, what I would call the shop signs that we put up, the, for instance, there's a park signs that can be merged into our wayfinding signs, so we don't have to have so many individual park signs up. There's a, I know there's airport signs that are downtown, for instance. I mean, I think that was a sort of signage that was excessive, or just outdated is what I, but it wasn't, it wasn't these.
Didn't have anything to do with the wayfinding signs?
And I don't, I don't think, this was a, well, I don't know if that, if it did, but I know we didn't come back, that's not the reason we didn't come back. I'm actually, it was more of a funding question than anything.
Thank you. Mr. Harmon.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This issue is before the council at a work session. That they had my idea. And if I could indulge the council with a little bit of historical background. Back in 2004, before Councilwoman Ortiz and I were elected, the city commissioned a wayfinding sign study, which identified there was a need in the city to help visitors, much as Councilman Campos indicated, help visitors find our attractions. That the report said that we had some very good tourist destinations, but nobody knew how to find them once they came to the city. So, they recommended of this way, the system of wayfinding signs throughout the city. I've had Jenny search the city over for a copy of that report, and one cannot be found. So, I'm not real happy about that, but be that as it may. It was a very comprehensive consultant's report. Anyway, so, when Councilwoman Ortiz and I were elected, there was a, there was a budget item to pay for $200,000 for the, for the initial phase, like Mr. Fiander indicated, for these installation of these wayfinding signs from what was called a general improvement fund, which was, if it's not familiar to you, that's because we don't have that fund anymore. But it was a mill levy supported fund, if I'm correct on that, Pam. There was some resistance on behalf of the council to, not with the wayfinding signs, but how we were going to pay for those signs. During our discussions, Councilman Alcala determined that we had excess revenue in the transient guest tax fund. And so, we rescinded the ordinance to have those signs paid for from the general improvement fund, and the council unanimously passed the ordinance to have those wayfinding signs that we see today paid for from transient guest tax funds. If memory serves, there was no opposition either to the wayfinding signs or to the method of paying for those signs through transient guest tax proceeds. Now, fast forward eight years to last month, as Mr. Fiander indicated, when the transient guest tax committee was working on the 2014 budget, the city had requested $150,000 to be taken from transient guest tax proceeds to be used for the wayfinding signs, both in terms of repair and in terms of additional signs, and then for an additional $170,000 in fiscal year 2015. I thought it was important, rather than for the transient guest tax committee to make that determination whether we should pay for those signs through transient guest tax funds, that the matter come back before the full council. Because eight years ago, the full council decided from a policy point of view that transient guest tax would be the best way to pay for those signs. We had some testimony, primarily from the hoteliers, who took issue with paying for the wayfinding signs through transient guest tax funds. Their thought, and I'm paraphrasing, is that, is that, it's their opinion that the wayfinding signs don't put heads on beds, and therefore, it should be paid from the city general fund rather than transient guest tax funds. So, I recommended to the transient guest tax committee, composed of Councilwoman Hiller and Councilwoman Schwartz, that we bring that issue before the council at a work session because really, it's a policy issue. I guess there's really two questions, two policy issues. Number one, do we want to continue with additional wayfinding signs? And second of all, assuming we do, what's the best way to pay for it? Do we want to pay for it through mill levy, generated tax revenues, or do we want to pay for it through transient guest tax proceeds? So, that's really the policy question of why I asked it to be brought before the council at a work session, because I think it's really an issue of policy for the entire council to consider. So, anyway, that's a little, little bit of background for the council, why that issue is before us for council discussion and deliberation, and see if we can discern some consensus. That's how we want to proceed. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate that, Richard. And I guess my question would be, can we legally do that? Because I know that there's only certain things that we can do with the guest transit money, and so, we've never done that before. Or we've never, am I, am I correct, Richard? We've never paid for this before, right?
Well, the initial signs that were put in in 2005 were paid for transient guest tax.
It was, okay.
Yes, yes. So, there is precedence for that, all deferred illegal, but...
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Mr. Fiander, I have a couple of questions for you. When were Phase 1 and 2 completed?
They would have been completed in 2000, after the plan was done, 2004, 2005.
So, they were done probably 2004, 2005?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, the Topeka signs that exist on the entry into town at the many points coming into Topeka, those are separate from these signs, am I correct?
Well, those are part of the family of signs. I don't, I mean, they were, as to when they were put up, I don't have that.
I think it was about three or four years ago, if I recall. And do you have any idea what Phase 1 and 2 have cost us?
Yes, just in signs by themselves, you're probably looking at about 220-some thousand. There was another 50-some thousand for the, paying for the consultant to come up with the system. And I would say that's a low, if you look at it today, that's kind of low, because some of the signs that we got in the, what I'll call Phase 1A, were not sturdy. And so, they were a little on the less, yeah, expensive side. Not, just, they just did not, they were made of resins instead of metals, for instance, and they cracked and they deteriorate, so.
So, does that explain, like, two blocks away, there's a sign that's fallen apart on 8th Street, or on 10th Street going into downtown?
At the bottom.
The laminate's peeling off of it.
The bridge.
Or in the back of it, yeah. Yeah, there's, there's, there's certain, it could be powder, you know, I don't think they had it powder coated. That looks like it wasn't. So, there are certain methods for the first, what I would call 1A phase, that we were not happy with. In fact, that company is no longer in business. So, the second phase, those went in, and we were generally much happier with, and they last. But there are some signs that are not.
Okay. Does the city have the capacity to make, say, street signs and stop signs and speed limit signs and things like that?
Well, street signs and street regulation type signs, yes.
So, we have the capacity to make signs?
Sure, yes.
Okay. I don't share what seems to be a consensus among the council. I don't think that these signs are an effective use of capital within the city. I've never traveled to a community and not known where I was going, or had the ability to Google it on my phone, or whatever else to try to find my destination. These signs, if somebody travels here, they're traveling here with a purpose, not with an intent to roam around our community in hopes that they find some historically significant structure to visit. The bid ta, the transient guest tax, from my perspective, is intended to make us money, not to spend money necessarily on something that I think is wasteful. And the bottom line from my perspective is that we're far past time to start making investments in our community that actually produce returns. There's no proof that $320,000 investment will do that. What if we took the $320,000 and put it into historical properties? Or put that into the bid fund and generated more revenue than that in just one weekend of traffic into our community? These signs don't serve a purpose. I stand opposed to them.
I went blank.
Mr. Fiander.
Yeah. I wanted to call him Ben, I was like, I know that's not Ben. Anyway, can, did you provide us with Phase 1 and a Phase 2? Was that, has that been provided to us? Like, what's been done and the cost?
Yeah, and the attached to, in the handout, we do have a table of every existing sign, our inventory of all signs. We also have an inventory of those signs that need repaired.
Okay.
And the signs that we're asking funds for is the last page, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And I appreciate Councilman Harmon bringing this issue to us. I've, I served on the transient guest tax committee for four years, and every year we struggle with this issue, and it's a philosophical issue. What, what is the use of the transient guest tax? And we, and it's the same thing as we hear, as we're discussing tonight. And Councilman Manspeakers' points, it's always, it's a challenge. In a sense, it's a great revenue source. We're not raising the property tax, and we can just raise that money and from other people outside the city who visit here, and we get to spend it. So, it is, it is a challenge. And I think, you know, we have, last year, or in the number of years, we have used it to fund, whether it's a, part of it went into our general fund. And that's questionable. To support, we would say that supports the police who have to manage the parades, or we used to have it for our own park department. So, I think it's, it is an issue. I am concerned that if we would use the transient guest tax funds for the wayfinding signs, then perhaps we reduce the amount we put into our general fund. I mean, you know, it's, you can only use so much of the transient guest tax, and I think then we are subject to some criticism of using it to fund the city, the city needs. Thank you.
Eli?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I was on the committee and got to delve into this a little bit more, and had several constituents call about, you know, the idea that, why do we need more signs, number one, and the signs that we do have, are they really helping? And have we done anything to try and survey tourists to see if the wayfinding signs have been the reason they came to Topeka? Because the transient guest tax is, comes from heads on beds. And if we run out of that money, we are not going to have that fund. And in 2005, we had an excess of money, that was before the recession hit. So, I can see where that money kind of came at, you know, we had an excess, I think that's what Bill said, we had an excess in the transient guest tax fund, and so, that's where the wayfinding signs came about. So, I guess my question to Bill is, what are the additional 82 signs for, and why do we need them for that $170,000 that would come out of the transient guest tax to additionally put those signs into Topeka?
Well, we don't, we haven't signed all of our 21 destinations, and we haven't signed anything new that has come on, like Noto or the Children's Discovery Center, for instance. We don't, we don't have a lot of the, so, that would be 23 destinations signed, and it's not complete, meaning if you send somebody down a street, you need, you might need another sign to complete that, their route. So, we don't have them all in. We got the basic bones of them in, the skeletons in, downtown is pretty much in, but as you go further away from downtown, there, those are not, those are not existing. So, it's just a matter of completing all the destinations and then updating them when we get new destinations.
Another question, is it okay? Do other cities pay for signs in their cities with transient guest tax funds, or is it come from another source of funding?
I haven't looked into that. I know, we did ask the states whether or not they could fund those through transportation funds, and we don't know of any city that has had any funds awarded to them through the state for wayfinding. And that's difficult.
If I could, I'd like to offer the other point of view. If we look at the transient guest tax fund as the source that we are using to attract, to keep people in our city, and in particular, to attract visitors, both just tourism visitors as well as conventioneers and tournaments, sports tournaments, and so on. If that's what we want, our goal is to have people stay overnight at the hotels and make money, but it's also to generate sales tax. It's also to get people to come and visit the various attractions that we have. I very much respect and actually admire my colleague, Councilman Manspeakers', reliance on Google and his cellphone, but what, not everyone functions that way yet. And part of creating the sizzle and the excitement about living here, which causes people to talk about it and encourage their families to come for Thanksgiving, or people to come and visit, is when you see evidence of what the attractions are, and you realize there's a place to stop. We make money when conventions and sports events come, but where we make more money is when people come a day early, or stay over, or bring their spouse or their family with them. And that's what we're all about, as I understand it, in encouraging tourism and wanting Topeka to thrive itself. First and foremost, for people who live here, and then to attract visitors, and eventually other people to live here. If you think of towns that you've been in, those signs get you from here to there. You say, oh, there's something here, or, oh, there's a historic house over there, whether you're walking, or whether you're driving, or you're on the bus, or whatever it is. The signs are a piece of the package, as well as maps and other sorts of tourism efforts. One of the things I commented about in the TGT meeting was that we've been strong in attracting the events, but we've not been strong in the visitor attraction to get that information out. There are more things that, in my opinion, we need to do than just the signs. We need to do the pre-event electronic media marketing that we've, most of us have seen from other communities and other opportunities. We have a lot of places that we can grow. I think, I would suggest that we need to look big picture, and if there is information that staff could provide about what other communities do in terms of master planning to increase tourism, I think what we'll find is it's not strictly recruiting conventions with bid money. So, I hope that whatever we would decide about whether to do signs or where the money would come from, that we're all thinking about the outcome we want, and that's sales tax, visitors, and activity. Thanks.
Are there any more questions or concerns?
If I could, yeah, if I could comment on Councilman Schwartz's comment. Two years ago, when we were working on transient guest tax, we did some research seeing how other communities were spending their transient guest tax funds, other than for the advertising part of it. The one area that particularly they do was, Overland Park is paying for its new convention center with the funds. Typically, they are tourist-related, sometimes into some historic properties, but we were the only city we could find that we just put some in the general fund. So, and we were high in the amount that we did that with. So, if that's helpful, thank you.
Appreciate it. Are there any more questions or concerns? If not, we appreciate that. If you have, appreciate that. And if you have any more questions for staff, let Mr., the city manager know. Thank you. This concludes our work session.
Please rise and give your attention to Councilwoman Michelle de la Isla for the invocation. Remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we ask for your presence here, and Lord, we ask for your wisdom. Father God, we ask for blessings upon the city of Topeka, our nation, our leaders, Lord, and all the nonprofits that are serving our community, as well as our service people that are here to protect us. Father, in this meeting, we just ask for your wisdom and for your guidance as we proceed with the matters of our city. Amen. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no proclamations and no presentations. We will proceed with the roll call.
Mayor Wolgus?
Here.
Ms. Hiller?
Here.
Mr. Campos?
Here.
Ms. Ortiz?
Here.
Ms. Everhart?
Here.
Ms. De La Isla?
Here.
Mr. Manspeakers?
Here.
Ms. Schwartz?
Here.
Mr. Harmon?
They will proceed with the consent agenda. The clerk will read.
Hey, our minutes have the regular meeting of June 11, 2013, and there are no applications.
Hey, you have heard the consent agenda.
Second.
Mrs. Ortiz has moved approval. De La Isla has seconded. All those in favor vote yes, those opposed vote no.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, consent agenda is approved. We proceed to new business. The first item is a selection of council member. The clerk will read.
A is selection of council member to fill the expired term of Council District Number Eight.
Alright, you received a, a packet of information from the city clerk. And on the first page, the procedure is described, what that process is going to be. As you note, we have three applicants. Each applicant will come in, they will have the opportunity to present an opening statement, not to exceed four minutes. And then we will have questions by the council members. The questions that have, that they submitted will be asked. And then we will have a, each of them will have a closing statement. The, after the, when the council member asks their question, they certainly can follow up with a, another question, if they, follow-up question if they choose. Are there any questions or comments to be made about this process? We start, and I went to acknowledge the deputy mayor's work through the council office in putting this, putting the process together. Yes, Deputy Mayor?
I, I just wanted to let my colleagues know that I asked the mayor to proceed on with this. I, I realize that it is under my direction, but I thought he did a fine job last time. To me, it's not about whose job it is, but I, I didn't want anybody to think that he's stepping on my toes, because he's not, it's not about whose job it is. To me, it's about teamwork, and that's what me and Larry are trying to possess here. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate that. Other comments, Mrs. Hiller?
If you could clarify, please, I think I understood the, the follow-up questions a little bit differently than, than what I think you just said. Could you review, then, we go through the questions that are in the book, and, and whether, if you could clarify whether a follow-up question can be asked, and when?
Okay.
And by whom?
Yeah, the, when the, for instance, if you ask your question, and the response is provided, and then you can follow up with a, you can have a follow-up question.
Okay. Can anyone else?
What, we, we didn't before. Now, we can set, we can set our rules, but that's, typically, we did not. We did not three or four months ago.
Okay.
Then, when we have finished, we can have, when all the questions have been asked, a council member can ask a follow-up question at that point if they wish.
Thank you.
Okay, are there other questions? And it's good, we want to make sure we're all together on it, same page. Alright, okay, I think we're ready for our first candidate, David Mountain. Hello, Mr. Mountain, welcome. The head of the chair is an applicant. And you know the procedure, first you will have the opportunity to have an opening statement. And there's a timer there, familiar with it, to the four minutes. Okay, you may begin when you're ready.
Alright, well, I'm not much one for speeches, so I'd just like to say thank you to the, Mr. Mayor, the City Council, and the city of Topeka for having me here tonight and providing the opportunity to apply for the open city council position. Thank you.
Alright, we will then proceed with the questions. And the council members note that they are after the first, after the first file. And we will go in the order that they are listed here, rather than changing them around as we did several months ago, that we thought was a good step, but led to some confusion. So the first question is asked by the deputy mayor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mountain.
Good evening.
Describe to me your district.
Oh, the eighth district is just like every other district in the town. It's full of people just trying to work and make their way, provide for their children, meet their goals, their expectations, and hopefully put away some money for retirement. They are just the same as everybody else.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The second question was, that I submitted. For council members, there is always the issue of serving your district versus serving the city as a whole. Please describe your thinking about how you would address this issue.
Well, any issue that affects the city of Topeka affects all the districts equally. So when you make your decisions, you should put the city first. But if the particular decision at hand might have a great influence on your district, then you can, should first consult your constituency, get their inputs, before you finalize your opinion on that district, that choice.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Hiller?
Please state the dollar amount of the city's annual operating budget, and please react to that in terms of the responsibilities of being a city council member.
Well, for 2013, our operating budget is $238 million. That is a large sum of money entrusted to us by the taxpayers to provide the services of our city that they require. So it is our duty to make sure that those services are provided for in an efficient and cost-effective manner as we can provide. Therefore, keeping our end of the bargain for those who elected us to these positions.
Thank you. Mr. Campos?
Good evening.
Evening.
If the city council were to support an extension of the Jado half-cent sales tax, in your opinion, what should the city's first priority be in the use of those monies collected?
Well, the city's first priority is to meet its existing obligations for that half-cent tax. After that money has been paid, we should also therefore move into investing in industry, and then providing educational subsidies. So that way, the city of Topeka can move towards having some of the most highly qualified workers in our area. Thank you.
Mrs. Everhart?
Hi. If you would, describe your participation in any community activities, and how you think that experience will help you as a community leader here.
Well, sadly to say, between work and going to Washburn full-time, my community service here in town has not been stellar. I'm pretty much limited to the ten years that I served in the Navy. And I think that that experience, that structure, and my global views that I've experienced in the Navy will help bring other perspectives and help think outside the box when approaching problems with the city council and the operations of the city of Topeka.
Mrs. De La Isla?
Hello. How do you foresee the role of city councilperson? Do you see it more as a hands-on job, or do you see it more as a policymaker and shaver?
It's actually a bit of both. For one, you have to make the policies, but then the hands-on portion of that is to see how the policies are interacting, make changes as necessary, get out in the community, find out what people think about these policies, get the opinions, be in the trenches, and then modify the policies as deemed necessary to better fit the situations, because they are always changing.
Mr. Manspeakers?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Mr. Mayor, first of all, Mr. Mountain, let me thank you for your service to our country. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Tell me, tell me an experience you've had in your life that makes you well-suited to serve on this council?
That's a good question. For my experiences, I always have to rely back on my naval experience. I've met countless of people, I've been through many different countries. I've recently come back from a trip from Japan where I got to interact with the people and the students in Japan. I've got a, a worldview that I'd like to bring back to this town. I keep abreast of current situations, follow the news. I think that having a broad perspective on events as they unfold helps manage my decisions here.
Mrs. Schwartz?
Thank you, Mayor Wolgus, welcome. And how would you familiarize yourself with the operations of the city, the budget departments, the contracts? And then how do you propose to ensure that the public's funds are not being spent wastefully in each specific area after this orientation?
I figure the best way to familiarize myself with the city's operations is to go through and read all the documentation, manuals, certifications, processes, and then visit these departments, spend time in these departments, be in the trenches with these workers as they perform their duties. So that way, I can understand exactly what it is that they're trying to perform, and help them do their job as required by the citizens of our town.
And the second part was how would you make sure we're not spending wastefully?
Well, when it comes to making sure that our funds are being spent efficiently, it's not a wise idea to throw money and studies to see if we are spending our money efficiently. We should be relying on our workers to point out the processes that are inefficient, and maybe use increasing efficiency as a part of advancement or promotion, so that there's a reward tied to improving how the city conducts its business.
Thank you. Mr. Harmon?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Mr. Mountain, for your willingness, for your interest in public service. How would you complete the following sentence? Leadership is?
Now, leadership is being honorable. And by honorable means doing the right thing, even when nobody is looking. And being honorable also means standing by your decisions, and admitting when you make mistakes, and take responsibility for those mistakes. Leadership is also being courageous, being able to be the first person to put their foot forward and take initiative on things that need to happen. And leadership is also determination, to stand by your convictions and finish what you have started. Leadership is also being patient, is being tolerant, and is being understanding of those that you are serving. You must always listen. Being a good leader means that you're a great listener. And lastly, being a great leader is also rejecting the status quo for, if you stand still, you're not making progress. Progress and change are inevitable, and so therefore, we must push forward and accept these changes and make progress. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes the asking of the questions. Are there any follow-up questions from council members? Seeing none, you have some comments to close.
No.
Okay, well, thank you very much for being an applicant. We wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you.
You may have a, you may have a seat. And then we will be ready for our second candidate, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you very much, good evening.
As you know, you have the process, you first have the opportunity to make the, some opening comments, to be limited to four minutes. And then we will have the questions asked that you have received by the council members. So when you are ready, you may proceed.
Alright, thank you very much. I'd like to thank the council, mayor, deputy mayor, and my constituency, and the citizens of Topeka for this opportunity. What initiated my wanting to sit on the council was, I feel that there's a need to upgrade accountability and transparency in our city government, in terms of how we help our citizens understand what the government is actually doing. One of the things that I really would like to do is set some standards to measure and assess our use of our money, look at how we use our human resources and our physical Basically, with an intent to accurately evaluate our levels of success and failure, to assess the needs in a timely manner, the things that we decide to do for the public, and then to systematically prioritize our resource usage to best benefit the city as a whole. The objective is to upgrade our customer service and to increase customer satisfaction across the whole entire city. And in doing so, some of the things that I feel need to be addressed, manage the delivery of city services with a focus on results, develop methods for increasing our organizational productivity, identify and establish and apply best practices in the delivery of city services, and develop citywide standards for customer service. And that's from bottom all the way to top, a fully integrated system. To focus on results, we need to streamline our customers' transaction time when doing business with the city, upgrade the city's responsiveness to city, citizens' needs, organize our communication processes, and that's to expand opportunities for obtaining input from citizens, and getting feedback on things that we do as a council. Well, enhance awareness and understanding of city services, especially in terms of the use of money and how it's spent, where it's going and what it's doing. Upgrade interaction with citizens, businesses, and neighborhoods. I think that with the TV station, we could start to expand our ability to communicate with our constituency, and then become more proactive and less reactive in resolving issues and problems. I have extensive experience in systems design, which is, I think, one of my strengths. But I have a, a very varied skill set that deals with strategic planning, workforce development, process management, marketing, information management is probably my strongest suit, and then accounting.
Now, that means you have one minute now to conclude.
I think, you know, with my skill set and the basic experience I've had in life, that it'll allow me to work with this council, to become a long-term asset, and develop in the future growth and development of the city.
Thank you. And we'll have the, the council members will ask questions that you received. The first one is from the deputy mayor.
Good evening, Chuck.
How are you doing?
Describe to me your district.
I did a descriptive abstract, basically instead of doing a demographic overview, per se. And one thing I looked at my district was the way that it's designed. I see some, some real concerns in terms of, from Gage all the way out to the end of the city, and then between Twenty First Street and Twenty-Ninth Street, I see it like segmented, and it's like from Gage to Fairlan, then from Fairlan over to Warner Maker, and then from Warner Maker out to Urisch, and then out beyond. And there's probably some real differences from neighborhood to neighborhood that need to be addressed. And I see that there's a probably real challenge to communicate with those different segments to find a commonality in terms of their needs and what they, they really need. Inside of it, we have six thousand of the households spread across that area. And I think one of the things that is really, is the income level. It's forty thousand for the city, and about sixty thousand for my area. And another issue, I think that is like very challenging, is the level of business inside of the area. It's a whole nother population with a whole nother concern. What I found was there was two hundred and twenty-five businesses in the area, ten of those are churches, but then there's twenty-six strip malls. And when I went to assess them, I don't know how many businesses are in each strip mall, but if it's five to ten, then you're looking at a serious number of merchants in that area that have some considerations and needs beyond what their residents have. So addressing both of those populations is a major concern.
The second question is, for council members, there is the issue of serving your district versus serving the city as a whole. Please describe your thinking about how you would address this issue.
I, I think that one of the primary concerns is to work within my district, and that is communicate with the constituency to find out what they think their problems are. I never presuppose, I know in my immediate neighborhood, there's some concerns on particular issues, but to set up an infrastructure work, communicate on a consistent basis is something that would be a real priority for me. be a real priority for me. In terms of the city as a whole, I think there's a common thread that needs to be addressed. You know, we use the same water, we use the same streets, we use the same fire department, we use the same police department. In terms of processing, it's very important that we look at this council, even though we represent a district, we have to take a holistic approach to deal with the system. Problems that affect one district can immediately affect another district or affect the city as a whole. So I think it's a mandate based on the issues that we're dealing with. We could deal with issues that are concerned with our district, but we also have to be very, very aware of the city as a whole. I think that when you sit on this council, after you're here, you're representing the district, but you're also mandated to represent at large.
Thank you. And on these, we have, in case the public isn't aware, I did say earlier, you have a two-minute time limit in responding to questions to the council members, so that's when you hear the light and the sound.
Yeah, that'd be the first thing I'd vote to change.
Next question is from Mrs. Heller.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for applying. Please state the dollar amount of the city's annual operating budget, and then please react to that in terms of the responsibilities of a city councilperson.
Okay, I went through the budget book, and I took a look, and what I found on page 137 was $220 million as operating budget with 1,200 employees. When I went and did the mathematics, I assumed that that's a rounded number, and it was rounded down from a different number because I took the total budget for 2013, that was on page 14, and I subtracted the debt service from that, and I got $221,161,578. And so I'm assuming that the 220 million is rounded. The issues in terms of working with that amount of money and what we're looking at is, I think there needs to be more transparency in reporting, which is where the transparency comes from. I'm not saying it's cryptic, but to go through the process of looking at the numbers and what's being spent, when it's being spent, it's not that clearly defined. Another concern is develop a comprehensive budgeting process so that we're looking out beyond the year that we're actually allocating money to start to look at trending in the past and start to make some basic budget decisions based on information that we already have. And then I think that we could do some more line item assessment in terms of looking at the budget and how the money's being spent.
Okay. Mr. Campos.
Good evening. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
The city council, if the city council were to support an extension of the Jado half-cent sales tax, in your opinion, what should the city's first priority be in the use of those monies collected?
I think that the use of that money at this time, you know, you're seeing a lot of industry sunset all around the world, and there's been like a dynamic shift in terms of the skills that people need. And so I think that one of the things that our economic development's going to have to do is start to take a look at actually developing our workforce. And that would entail looking at our whole human resource pool and not just the people that are unemployed, but start to work backwards like down the feeder line and start to take a look at our kids in school all the way down to preschool, as far as I'm concerned, and start to look at what kind of skills are they going to need to survive. I think with the economic development, the processing that goes on is very, very important, but I think that there needs to be some clearly defined performance measures. So what are they doing with the money, and what can we see that that money's done to help us accomplish the things that we want to do? Set some specific goals and start to try to attain them.
Okay, thank you. That's, we're going to have to conclude. Was that one?
I've got one.
No? I'm sorry. I apologize. I got the light wrong. Please continue.
All right. I lost my... No, I'm just kidding. The process of designing, how that money's going to be used, I think should be done in an approach that involves a large cross-section of our community, you know, our educators, the governments, and even private organizations, especially businesses, that are in tune with what kind of skills people need.
Have a follow-up, Mr. Mayor. Yes or no, would you support an extension of the Jado half-cent sales tax?
I would support an extension of the Jado sales tax because I think that economic development is a very, very important concern for any community, but in order to support it, I think that some of the things that I described, or at least I put out here, would need to be clearly defined.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Everhart.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Describe your participation in any community activities and how you think that experience will help you in some ways.
I've had quite a bit of experience in my life in community activities. In Topeka, it's been kind of different because of the work that I was doing, especially when I worked for the city. I worked in a capacity of oversight and regulatory processing. I got to know almost every agency in the city, but my job was to make sure that they were in compliance with ADA. And so a lot of times when I would want to work with community organizations or agencies, I had to be very careful not to become involved in something that would be considered a conflict of interest. I have, in the past, like helped certain neighborhood associations and a couple of nonprofits. I write grants for them pro bono or give them some kind of feedback in terms of how to develop their organizational structure, those types of things like that.
Hello?
How are you doing?
Doing great. How do you foresee the role of councilperson? Do you see this as a hands-on role, or do you see it as a policymaker role?
I think that the concentration of concerns is on the developmental policy, but then it sort of spreads itself out in terms of defining hands-on. I know that you can't drop down to a management level where you're dealing with issues with personnel, those types of things like that, but I think in terms of process management, those types of things, you want to ensure that city business and programs fit the needs of the public. And so that could lead to what someone would perceive as hands-on, you know, you're involved in, working directly with staff to better understand the system or the systems that they're trying to put in place. And then to, it's actually developing a process that's intended to cultivate a viable policy. And so it looks like hands-on. I have an example. I don't know if it's appropriate, but when I was here last time, worked on a process to deal with animal control, and I worked directly with council members when we actually started to develop that and it turned into a policy, that type of thing.
Mr. Man speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tell me an experience that you've had in your life that makes you well-suited to serve on this council.
This is the hardest question to me. You thought of this. All right. Actually, I had a life experience when I was 29 years old, and I had a friend that was paraplegic, and we were working, we left here and was working in Wyandotte County dealing with accessibility. And what we did was we created a program for physically children, to teach them sports and recreation. And actually, that program had concerns with developing processes that would help them in their day-to-day lives to deal with issues like stereotypes, physical barriers, economic issues. And I think in answering your questions, the things that I learned in the process of dealing with that was I learned patience and perseverance. I learned how to impact and mobilize an entire community to assist in solving a problem or problems. And I learned how to write grants, I learned how to budget monies, and I really learned how to network. But I think the most important thing that I learned in that whole process over a five-year period was I learned humility. I really did. I learned that doing something for others, you don't have to worry about recognition or even reward. And that's basically what I bring from that experience.
Mrs. Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and welcome, and thank you for applying. How would you familiarize yourself with the operations of the city, the budget departments and contracts? And then, how do you propose to ensure that the public's funds are not being spent wastefully in each specific area after this orientation?
I think I have a head start on familiarizing myself with the city in terms of its organizational design or structure. I worked as an analyst in performance management, but I also worked across all 11 departments, all 28 divisions, helping with design and the processing that they were doing. I think the one thing that is a concern is like, you can build a car, but it doesn't mean you know how to drive one, or you can drive one, it doesn't mean you know how to build one. So this would be like a whole new learning curve for me. It would start all over again in terms of what my role would be in terms of dealing with them. In terms of ensuring that these things are working the way that they were supposed to work, I think that there's a systematic way to start to take a look at how we're using the things that identify in terms of money, human resources, and our physical assets, and start to monitor that to make sure that we're meeting the actual needs of the public based on mandates.
Mr. Harmon.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Mr. Wilson, for your interest in this position. How would you complete the following sentence? Leadership is...
That actually is the hardest, was the hardest question. I wrote my own definition, was that leadership is the ability to enlist the help of others and guide them with the intent of obtaining a result that would have not occurred in any other way. Usually, leadership is trade-oriented, or at least people say that, is trade-oriented. So the elements of self-awareness, self-direction, vision, the ability to motivate others, and even social awareness are part of that definition of leadership. But I think as I pondered this question, one of the most important aspects was the ability to ensure that everyone involved in the task feels that they play a key role in obtaining the result. And most of all, I think leadership is the ability to know when you should follow instead of lead. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the questions. Are there any follow-up questions from council members? If not, then you have the opportunity for some closing remarks. Mr. Wilson.
I just think that when this position opened up, what prompted me to put my application is the process of looking at things that are happening in my hometown and things that are going on. I think that I reached an age where I have the skill coupled with the experience to help a lot in the design and development of good government.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your coming here and being an applicant and appearing before the council. You may have a chair.
Appreciate it.
Then we'll be ready for our third applicant, Nathan Schmidt. Welcome, Mr. Schmidt. Have you here appearing before us. If you know the background, you have an opportunity to make an opening for four minutes. There's a clock or the lights there, and then we will have the questions by the individual council members. And if you're ready, you may proceed.
I'm ready. First, I'd like to thank all the current members of the council and Mayor Wolgast for the service you provide to this city. It's often a thankless job that requires many hours invested and many difficult issues to address. I would like to thank the other candidates for stepping forward today to better serve their community. Topeka's a city of remarkable resources. We're home to a fine university. We sit less than an hour's drive between two major research universities. We're the seat of state government, home to several large corporations that operate both nationally and internationally. We possess an accomplished and diverse citizenry that engage in a wide variety of vocations from medicine to engineering to music and the arts, to the practice of law, banking, and many others. Topeka is a city of consequence. We have a rich history of being a community unafraid to advance the plight of all men and women. This is the city of Cyrus K. Holliday, the founder of the Atchison-Topeka and Santa Fe. This is the city of Brown versus Board of Education. It's the city of John Brown. It's the city of Jim Lane. It's also the city of Arthur Capper and Carl Menninger, who improved the lives of many who had no voice. Kerry Nation even stopped by to redecorate many of our saloons, usually without permission. It's a city of consequence, and it's a city that strives to be the best it can be for its citizens and those beyond its boundaries. As current citizens, we owe much to these founders, and we have an obligation to continue to make the city as good as it can be. We have to keep the larger picture in mind as we deal with the issues that we face today. As member of the council, you're an integral part of continuing the growth and progress of this city. And if I'm elected, I will seek to continue what you and others have carried on. We cannot achieve perfection, but we can always achieve better, and that should be our goal. I will work with you and other citizens to move Topeka forward, to provide opportunities, support, and growth. A city of this size is always going to have conflicts and issues, and those are not barriers to progress, but rather catalysts to innovation and progress. We all want this to be the best city it can be, and working together is the only way to get there. At times, we've struggled with that. At times, we have let bickering and infighting impede progress. Even this body has seen its share of dissension and combative resistance that occasionally devolved into pettiness and made the city less than it could be. The current makeup of this council has seemed to move beyond that, and as a member, I would like to continue and expand that trend. I look forward to working with each and every one of you to find solutions, innovative ideas, and mutually beneficial compromises, to further our rise and to build the city that we are all proud to call home, a city businesses and entrepreneurs feel good about locating in, a city that attracts bright, new men and women looking to expand their lives, and for a place to be active participants in a community they too can be proud to call home. Again, I would like to thank you all for what you do and for this opportunity, and I stand open for questions.
Thank you. We will proceed with the questions. First one is from the deputy mayor.
Good evening, Nathan.
Good evening.
How are you this evening?
I'm doing just fine. A little nervous, but not too bad.
Okay. Just breathe.
I'm trying.
All right. First question, describe to me your district.
My district is largely a quiet residential area that's intersected by the commercially-developed Wanamaker corridor. It consists of working-class and middle-class neighborhoods, including a mix of young families working to create quality lives and residents who are more established. It is a district that values education and quality schools, safety and law enforcement, and smart economic development. Developmentally, it's a younger portion of the city with solid infrastructure and a sense of community pride.
Your second question, for council members, there is the issue of serving your district versus serving the city as a whole. Please describe your thinking about how you would address this issue.
My thinking on this is that we're all in this together. I think it's important, given the diversity and complexity of our city, to represent the various sections of this city, the factions and interests of the city, while remembering that we're all on the same team. I will work to ensure that the interests of my district are known and considered on all issues that come before this body. At the same time, I'll be aware of the bigger picture of the city as a whole, something that is a marginal benefit to my district... Something that is a marginal benefit to my district but is detrimental to the rest of the city or another area of the city is not something I would support, nor is it something I would hope other members of the council would support. We're going to have disagreements on how to do things, on what things to do, but we all have a goal of making the city the best it can be, a city that provides opportunity and prosperity across district boundaries, and we're all on the same team.
Thank you. Mrs. Hiller?
Thank you for coming and being here with us tonight.
Thank you for having me.
Question, next question is, please state the dollar amount of the city's annual operating budget, and please react to that in terms of the responsibilities of being a city council person.
Okay. Two-hundred-and-thirty-eight million, five-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand, and twenty-one dollars is the total operating budget for 2013. Eighty-three million, nine-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars, of which make up the city's general fund. It's a big number. It's a very big number. Comes with a lot of responsibilities. As a council person, I would feel responsible to ensure that that money is spent wisely, is spent transparently, and is spent efficiently. We are tasked with that money to make sure that the city works for its citizens. We have to take that task seriously. It isn't play money, and it isn't for frivolous things. That money needs to be spent with a known and clear purpose, and that purpose has to align with the best interests of the citizens from whom the money ultimately comes.
Mr. Campos?
Thank you very much for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
If the city were to support an extension of the half-cent sales tax, JADO, in your opinion, what should the city's first priority be in the use of these monies that we collect?
I think the first priority should be to continue the improvements to basic infrastructure that we've been working on over the last several years. I think we are all occasionally annoyed by orange barrels and detours, but I think it's also pretty clear that the city has made great strides with regard to roads and some of our basic infrastructure over the last several years. Continuing that progress across the entire city and maintaining what we've already accomplished is critical to making Topeka a vibrant place to live and a place that attracts businesses and other opportunities.
Thank you.
Mrs. Everhart?
Hi. Describe your participation in any community activities and how that experience will help you as a community leader.
Thank you. I've been involved in a variety of activities in this community, from helping with Let's Start to coaching youth football and track, to enjoying and supporting the arts, to volunteering with Tark's Winter Wonderland. I even dressed up as a clown, no pictures available, for National Night Out Against Crime. I participated in events like the Fiesta and the Topeka Ten Man Triathlon. Probably most relevant to this position was my volunteering and being appointed to the city redistricting commission. I was able to work with some great fellow Topequans to come up with a fair and equitable solution to our required redistricting. We were not without conflict or competing interests, but we recognized each other's positions, and we worked collectively to come up with solutions that worked best for all of Topeka. It was a glimpse into how effective government can be when conflict isn't allowed to become contentious. It's a skill I hope to bring to this council, the ability to address issues and conflict in a manner that seeks solutions rather than inflaming divisions. We're not all going to agree on everything all the time, but we're all going to agree that we want to make Topeka better, so.
Mrs. Delisla?
Welcome. How do you foresee your role of city council person? Should you be chosen, would you see that as a hands-on role, or would you see it more as a policymaker?
I don't really think it's an "or." I believe it's more of an "and." I think the city council, it's responsible for setting policy, modifying it, and, you know, at times interpreting it. In order to be effective at that, the council also needs to be hands-on. The council needs to see how these policies affect citizens, businesses, visitors to our community. It's important to seek the counsel of the citizens that are going to be impacted by these policies and to ensure that we're all on the same page with what they mean and what the intention of the policies is to do. A lot of times, these are pretty complicated policies, and intentions can be something that's lost, something that's lost between, you know, the council and the people who are having to deal with these policies. No council person can be an expert in all areas. We must rely on staff and citizen input to find solutions and to make government as efficient and as responsive to citizens as we can.
Mr. Man Speaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tell me the experience that you've had in your life that makes you well-suited to serve on the council.
I think all of my life experience is actually relevant to this position. I've lived in the city as a student with very little money and few contacts. I've been in this city as a young college graduate, looking to start out a new career, and I've lived here as someone who's established a career and is looking to give back to the community, to the community that embraced me and provided me with the opportunities I've had to make my life better. I want to create that kind of environment for all people in this city and for all new people looking to find a place to call home, as I did.
Mrs. Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and welcome. How would you familiarize yourself with the operations of the city, the budget, the departments, the contracts? And then, how do you propose to ensure that the public's funds are not being spent wastefully in each specific area after this orientation?
First, I would familiarize myself with all of the documentation available on the issues that we're addressing. Following that, I would seek counsel from those within the city and within the community who are experts or knowledgeable about the issues that I'm being asked to deliberate on. After I become more familiar with the inner workings of city government, I'll strive to keep myself informed on the implementation of those policies and how they're actually being received in the community. And I'll hold the parties involved responsible for the effective and efficient use of the funds that we provide or designate to them.
Mr. Harmon?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt, for being here and for your interest in public service.
Thank you.
How would you complete the following sentence? Leadership is...
Leadership, to me, is listening. I consider myself, although some will probably disagree, to be a fairly intelligent person, but I know that I'm not the smartest person in the room on most issues. It's important to listen to the concerns of others, to the opinions of people that are directly involved, and to the expertise of those with experience on whatever issue is before us or whatever issue we face. I'll listen to those voices. I'll seek counsel with people who know more about an issue than I do, and I'll take that knowledge and use that to come to a decision that's in the best interests of Topeka and the citizens of District Eight.
Thank you. That completes the round of questions. Are there any follow-up questions by council members? If none, then you have the opportunity to make closing comments, if you would do that, please.
I think I summed up most of my views in the opening statement. I just wanted to, again, thank all of you for the commitment that you've made to the city, for everything that you do. It's not an easy task, and it is a task that's important, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Appreciate your coming before us and being an applicant. You may have a chair. Now it is time for the council members, the governing body, to vote. You have before you the ballots. The first one is the green ballot. If you would please mark your choice and sign that, sign the ballot, and then pass it to your left to the city clerk, who will read. And we do have to have five votes for a candidate for an election. Mr. Harmon?
I can't vote for myself again, can I?
No, I think that's, yeah. One of the unwritten rules is you have to vote for one of the candidates, not yourself.
He has to live in the district.
Yeah.
Has he moved?
Right.
Here we have Wilson. Schmidt. Schmidt. Wilson. Schmidt. 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 And Schmidt. We have seven for Mr. Schmidt.
Okay. Mr. Schmidt, having received seven votes, he is elected as the new council member from District Eight. And we have approaching us our municipal judge, Judge Miller. And we will then have a swearing-in.
Please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear?
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America...
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas...
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of...
Topeka City Council Member, District Number Eight.
Topeka City Council Member, District Number Eight.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Please, congratulations. Please take your place at the council. Thank you, Judge Miller. And we will have more congratulations later, but now we proceed with the meeting, and you will soon have the opportunity to vote. Someone will show you the buttons to press as we move along with this process. The next item is, under new business, is applications.
There are three cereal malt beverage applications we're asking for approval, Seabrook, Apple Market, Superstore, and Woody's Express.
Okay, you have heard the applications for retail cereal malt beverage. What is your pleasure? Mr. Campos has moved, Mrs. Ortiz has seconded. Discussion, all those in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no.
Your vote, Mayor?
I vote yes.
We have ten yes.
And having voted yes, the applications are approved. We'll proceed with the first readings.
A is an ordinance introduced by council member John Campos, authorizing the sale, consumption, and possession of alcoholic liquor as part of the 2013 Fiesta Mexicana at specified locations and times for a special event pursuant to KSA 41-719-A2 and KSA 41-2645-E1. First reading.
Thank you. Those are the first readings. We will proceed with the presentations. And Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to inform everybody, as I'm sure they already know, that we did experience a microburst in North Topeka that caused moderate damage, mostly to trees, some isolated flooding knocked over some trash cans, and I believe I heard that council member Hillary's clothes ended up in, clothesline ended up in Douglas County today. But it was really isolated to a six-block area. Several residents, estimated to be thirteen hundred, lost power. That power is currently being restored. Crews are out right now. There's no report of any type of injuries. There is a tree limb that fell on a car, and one of our HND houses was also struck by a limb today. So we're out, we have staff out looking at that. And there's also a damage to a stretch of the railing on Kansas Avenue. So, long story short, we've got a lot of people out there that are following up this event, which really just appeared quickly today, as microbursts do. So that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Good to hear that, that we have, that we are responding and on top of that. I want to mention one item, again, from our meeting last week, and council members, Man Speaker and Schwartz could not be here. We had a person appearing, an item on the agenda pertaining to wanting to have the privilege of having water services who lived outside the city and had not signed up in advance. And actually, as our rules state, they are prevented from speaking. And fortunately, Deputy Mayor requested that we do with the rules for a minute and allow the person to speak, which we did. And I certainly want to give the impression that, and I think the council does, that we want to hear from the citizens, particularly in a situation like this where there was an interested party. It did not go through the planning commission, so there was not a public hearing. This is a particular ordinance that really affected an individual. And we have that rule, of course, so that we have a good meeting, but at the same time, I think, I certainly feel we did the right thing to allow that person to speak. And I think when we have future situations similar to that, I think the council would agree that that is the direction that we want to go. And particularly, you know, I think we want to be an opening, welcoming body towards our citizens, towards the people we represent, not that we do not want to hear from people. So I think that's a very strong message from this council that I believe that is our feeling towards the community. And whenever there's any question about that, we want to address it and make sure that we are providing people the opportunity to state their views, particularly when it is an issue that they are individually interested in and have, and seriously economically, an economic situation. Okay, Mrs. Delisla?
I would like to just thank the two gentlemen that tried for the position here. I just completely honor your dedication to the city, to trying to better your community, and for your engagement, so just wanted to extend that appreciation today.
Mr. Man Speaker, Ms. Schwartz, your opportunity. Mr. Schmidt? Yeah. That's the first requirement.
I just want to thank the council for the opportunity. I also want to thank my fellow candidates for stepping forward and being willing to serve, and I hope that we all stay in communication with each other in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harmon?
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, I want to extend congratulations to Mr. Schmidt on his successful candidacy, and applaud Mr. Mountain and Mr. Wilson, who I believe has already left the chamber, for their willingness to step forward and serve the community. That is very much appreciated, and hope you will continue to stay engaged in the public policy arena. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mrs. Hiller?
I too want to offer my congratulations and thanks to the other candidates. And as part of that process, kudos to the council. Once again, I mean, we've been through this process once before, but I thought the questions were great, and I thought the leadership and putting the process together was great, and I also feel like we have a good result, so I'm excited to have a full complement and be ready to move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Campos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would also fourth like, or third, excuse me, extend congratulations to you, welcome to the city council. I enjoyed serving with you on the redistricting commission. I also want to invite people out, we're in the last two weeks for the Fiesta food sales, so I want to see every single city employee there for lunch. And with that, I'll send it over.
Mrs. Ortiz, Deputy Mayor?
I will not be treating.
Nice try, Jim.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank all the applicants for stepping forward, and then I'd like to welcome Nathan to the board. Hold on to your seat, it's going to be a ride you will not... ride you will not forget. And if I don't say anything else, Jenny is your most valuable tool, right there. And you're probably like, really? Yes, she's your most valuable. She's very valuable to us, and she will treat you just like she treats all of us. So, if you don't hear anything else, hear that, okay? But anyway, we thank you for applying, and we congratulate you. Next, I'd just like to say happy birthday to the city manager. I don't know how they do it in Arizona, but we would just like to extend to you a happy birthday. I think it's Thursday. Is that correct?
Tomorrow. It's tomorrow.
It's tomorrow. He doesn't, he just doesn't want to remember there, so anyway. Anyway, and that's really all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Everhart.
Thank you. I passed out a copy of the news release. Last week I mentioned, because I have an NIA member who's a, an NIA member who also is a member of the Cavalee Amateur Radio Club, so I passed this out. He asked me to make sure you all had a copy of the news release, but just a reminder that when they're not at the Fiesta, to come out June 22nd and June 23rd from 1:00 p.m. to 1:00 p.m. It's a 24-hour deal, and they're going to be at the Cal River State Park, which is on Wanamaker, about as far north as you can go, and you hit that park. But they'll be there, and they'll be showing you emergency communications and things like that, and so if you have a chance and you're looking for something to do, I think it'd be a great place to go by and have a look and maybe show your kids. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, I think it was a good council meeting. Deputy Mayor, thank you for your comments. I think as well, we work together, the process works, a good system, and so now we're ready to move ahead with a full council again. And welcome and well, thank you to the other applicants, but we really appreciate your joining us. Look forward to serving with you. And with that, we are adjourned. I'm sorry. Excuse me. We are not adjourned. We have public comment. We have Mr. Stootsman. Steve Stootsman. With Mr. Stootsman not here, we will once again declare the meeting adjourned.